Hey, welcome to Boring Work Session #2. The work sessions that will put you to sleep as you watch me do all the boring work in the print-on-demand world. So let us dive in. I'm gonna go to my store, see if I have the right one. Hopefully I do. Oh, okay, hang on. Let me log in. Well, there we go. Now you can see, I have 15 in here. So far. So, Boring Work Session, what we're gonna do is some boring work, which is create a couple more mockups, get them uploaded, get all that good stuff done. Let me just see where I'm at, as far as... I think I actually did some more. Mockups here, I'm just going to my store folder, which is here. And... To design, nope, products. And 15, okay, so I gotta do 16 to 20, and then do a couple more mockups, and a couple more... Uh, there, okay, so here we go. Perfect, alright, let's do a duplicate. Gonna do number 16. And again, um, I get a lot of people that ask me like, "How many hours does it take me to get success?" And like, all that stuff, and I'm like, "A lot." Like, there is so much boring work involved in print-on-demand. It's not even funny. The amount of like, sexy, good-looking stuff, and those screenshots, and all that awesome, amazing, um... Let's, uh, like, just design. All that amazing stuff that you see, it takes a long time to get there, like, a long time. So, I wanna show everybody, like, black, dark leather, heather indigo, military green, okay. Move that to the other screen. I wanna show everybody all the boring, ridiculous, not ridiculous, but just super slow-moving. Um, click, 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 you have to do on everything. Eh, it doesn't look the best on Heather Indigo, but we'll go with that. They have to do, and then you can hear me just natter along the way, and, uh, you know, puts on the background while you're working. And maybe once in a while, I'll toss out a golden nugget for ya. But otherwise, um... Like I said, the whole experiment is based on my kids who like to watch people play video games, and I'm like, "I don't get it." But usually, when I don't get something... It doesn't matter, because it'll work. Pickball, well, can't, I have pickleball, there we go. Uh, sizing is good, alright, save this draft, boom, done. 16 is done, only because I had the mockups already done. So let's do a dupe. Dup, 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 dupe, edit. And then the next one is right here, number 17. I call number 17 here "Racketball Sunset." But it should be "Racket and Ball and Sunset," I'm gonna put it like that. I should've probably put some text with this one, but I didn't. I don't know why. We're gonna do "Black, charcoal, heather indigo, military green, navy." I think we just said that, "Black." Oh. Instead of that, did that. Black, charcoal, heather indigo, military green, and navy, okay. I think that's a neat shirt. Like, this is more of an image-based one, but I think it's kinda cool. So, 0017, and this one is... There. Save. See, we are flying, and actually, if you're gonna batch this out, it might be a better idea to do like, the mockups, and then do the upload to Printify in different batches. Because it could move a little bit quicker. So you can see how fast I can get these into Printify now. There we go. And now, there is a thing too, um, if you're gonna do multiple countries, then you need to plan it out in advance, because you need to... That's a whole thing, where you gotta set up your shipping, you gotta set up your markets. If you're looking for a soft serve, go get ice cream, I actually like that one. Uh, you're going to need to make copies of all of your shirts for the different company, different countries, not companies. Black, dark heather, heather indigo, okay. In order to, um, serve it to them, so for example, if somebody orders one from Canada, I do not want it to go out from uh, the United States supplier, because the shipping will be ridiculous, and it'll take forever, even though we share a border. That looks really good. There we go. So, that's where, like, say this one sold to a Canadian, well, I'd have to have a duplicate of this product, but the actual fulfillment company would have to be a Canadian fulfillment company. So they're gonna charge them a different shipping rate, and a different, basically, base cost. But you can manually go in and switch out the order later. So if you're looking for a soft serve, go get... Some ice cream, or ice cream? Go get ice cream, okay. Ice cream, there we go. But for now, I'm just gonna stick with US only. Because... Um, I don't want to... Yeah, I could copy to, no, replace provider. You'd wanna like, do a duplicate of everything to get it to work. Anywho... Let's do a duplicate of that, that's a good design too. This one... This is just rackets. Let's edit this. So going international on your store is a lot more work involved in setup and in execution. Uh, but it can be worth it, because you can get a lot of sales internationally. And you can still have like, the supplier come from close to the country that they're in, if it's in like, Europe. Um, or at least somewhere that's gonna provide them a lot faster service than trying to ship from like, the US to everywhere. Because you end up with a lot of, uh, ticked-off customers. Oh, I got white, I don't want white. Save. Alrighty, and this one is called... What do I call this one? Pickleball Rackets. Pricing's right, save, there we go. And do a duplicate, edit. Just another pickleball racket. This one's actually really cool. Like, that design's cool, but I like this design better. Love this. There we go. It's a cool design, alright, variants. And again, I'm just looking on my other screen. Dark heather, uh, don't have that. Black, yes. Didn't do military green. I did navy, and... Spark gray. Alright, there we go. Okay, and this one is called, again, Pickleball Rackets, but I can, I can put the same name, because I have a different number. That's the way the number matters, especially when you're searching your products in your store. Because you can actually look at them. So I have two with the same name, but that's fine. So now, I'm at the point where I've got 20 on Printify. And, but now, like, spot 21 is empty, so if I go back up here into my design files, I got all these other ones to do. So let's start, I mean, it doesn't really matter where. All these. A lot of work to do. Let's dig ghouls, nice. Alright, so now, we're gonna load up PhotoP. And... We're gonna load in our mockup generator. Just here. Just drag and drop it. And like I said, always make sure that you close out this little X here before you close out this X when you're using it. So I'm gonna double-click on Design goes here. Just gonna open this file, and then I can go in here to my Designs folder, just basically, we're gonna at the bottom, I got a bunch. Just drag and drop it over, right there. Take a second, turn that one off, on the bottom. And just kinda move that down a bit, make it a little bit bigger. Just a different kind of racket and ball one. And hit Ctrl-S. And I'll save the smart object. Hopefully. Computer froze, come on baby, there you go. And now my thing is ready, well, that looks pretty good. File, Export Layers, Combinations, Export. Okay, now while I'm in here, I'm gonna do another folder. It's going to be this. And I'm gonna go to my Products. And number 21 is gonna be called, what should we call this one? Pickleball... Circle design, um, whatever. And I'll just drag this over here. And I'll rename this to you. Not the best name, but good enough. Alright, now I've got that here, so I'm gonna go over there, and I'm gonna extract it. Extract. Extract all, there we go. Browse to number 21, select, extract. Alright, rename. And, oh, didn't rename. Double-click it. View Large Icons, see which ones look best. So black, I think, just, oh. You know what, that looks pretty good on white too. And gray, so I'm gonna do a combo, so I'm gonna do light, gray, black. Uh... I think even a red for this one, looks kinda cool. And what I want is like, a dark heather. Oh yeah, there we go, five. That, that, Ctrl, remove that, right-click, cut. From here, Extras, Paste. Alright, that one's ready to go. Then I'll go back here. Let's move that window over here, move that window over here. X out to here. Oh, missing a window. Designs, there they are. Move that one over here, there we go. Alright, so the next design, let's double-click. Is going to be like, a flag-type design. But I found that looked pretty cool. So I put it in there, turn off the bottom layer. That's a little smaller. It's like a US flag. Alright, Ctrl-S. Excuse me. And computer is, like, there we go, smart object, good. That's cool, not too bad. Not, I mean, I never buy that, million years, but some people might. Combinations, Export. Layers. Okay, now, let us put that one in here. Should recall this one. Pickleball, American flag, that's good. Then I'm gonna drag the design in there. There. Alright, now, I'm going to extract that one into that folder. And then I'm gonna view the folder. Go View Icons, Large. Double-click. And this one does not look good on white. However, looks really good on black, and possibly like, I would say navy, definitely. Spark gray, oh, actually, that doesn't look bad either, so I got three. Uh, let's go four, five. Ooh, I like it on the dark heather, okay. There we go. Now let's organize this. Right-click, cut. Paste into the Extra folder, and that one's done. Good. Alright, next. Let's X out of this. What do we got? I don't even know what this says, "People play..." Happy people play pickleball, okay, that's cool. Better here, smaller. Okay. Close enough, Ctrl-S. There we go. That's neat, happy people play pickleball, alright. File, Support Layers, Custom Combination, yep. And we'll name number 23. Happy People Play Pickleball. Then drag the design file in. Happy Play Pickleball. Alright, and then... Already got this folder open, so I'll just extract it. Number 92, Extract All. Right into... Oh, this one? Alright, uh, Large Icons. Rename, Black, just look good on white, no, I can't see it. Uh, not bad on spark gray. I'm gonna go black, spark gray for two, navy for three. Hmm... I think... Four, five, yeah, that's good. And hold Shift down, hold Ctrl, press that. Cut. Paste, there we go. Alright. Move that over. Move that over. And let's do the next one. That's this one, well, I like this one. So this one says... Let's see in a second, "Never underestimate an old man with a pickleball paddle." That's cool. Just, I hit Ctrl-S, I'm just waiting. There we go, that's what it looks like. That's actually pretty cool. Okay, File, Support Layers, Combos, Export. And let us drag this guy over here, and this is... Never Under. With a... Now, is it called a paddle or a racket? Or is it called both? Guess I should figure that out. I wonder. Hmm. Okay, number 93 is that one, so Extract All, Browse. And, there. See what these look like? Could that, no, that's... I think it'll go, okay, on spark gray, so let's go black. Two, three. Um, four. Five, yeah, okay. And again, I'm not being super picky about the colors, because... Uh, it doesn't really matter all that much. It matters a bit, but I think your black ones are gonna sell like, the best typically. Always. So don't get too concerned if they don't. Alright, double-click, let's do the next one. Let's drag this baby in here, it says, oh, okay. A funny one. This one I like, I think this is gonna do well. I'd hit that. I think I have, and I hit that, or I would hit that, that's actually cool. Alright, so, File. Export Layers, Combinations. And again, let's drag this over here. Oh, 25. And I'll put the design in here, rename it. I just didn't use the apostrophe in the PNG, because I know it won't load if there's one in it. Never does, on Printify, so right-click, Extract All. Product 25, Select, Extract. And there we go. Well, uh, I wish it would just default to this, but for some reason it's not. Does that look good on white? Hmm, no. Alright, so let's go black. Gray, that looks good, navy. Dark heather, and what do we got? Maybe a red? Red's not bad, let's try that red. Although reds don't really sell that well, but we'll try it. Right-click, cut. Right-click, cut, not copy. Right-click, paste. Okay. So, what we can do, let's bounce back here for a sec. Let's go File. Save as PSD, we'll save that. Just while we work, and then over here, let's upload those five, so duplicate. Yeah, we'll just bring these in now. So I think we're at number 21. And pickleball circle design. The colors are actually, white, spark gray, black, dark heather, and then I did a red. I didn't do a navy in that one. Navy wouldn't look good. No. Just going off the colors in my folder. And Title-wise, call this 0021. This is what, pickle? Circle design. Save. Alright, duplicate. Edit. This one, the American flag. Colors were black, dark heather, heather indigo, navy, and spark gray. That's actually pretty good. So let's just turn all these off, go to black, dark heather, heather indigo. Uh... Spark gray. And maybe, it looks better on darker colors. There we go, save. This one is... Got that, save. Good. Dupe. And, delete this one. Drag in this one. Big file, might take a minute. There we go. And Variants, we have black, charcoal, heather indigo, navy, and spark gray. Alright, so I'm just gonna clear all these. Black, charcoal, heather indigo, not white. Navy. Spark gray. Although, hmm, not crazy about spark gray. But looks good on black, let's save that. This one is called "Happy People Play Pickleball." Save. Products. So, Duplicate. Edit. Delete. This is another one, I think is pretty cool. Think I might do pretty well. Select Variants. What do we need here? Black, dark heather, military green, navy, and spark gray. Okay, so, black. Dark heather. Military green. Navy, spark gray. Probably looks best on black, but here's what it is. This is 0024. Never Under. So what it says? Yeah, with a pickleball paddle. Pricing's good, okay, save. Now, Duplicate. Edit. Click Delete. This one is, I'd hit that. Let's move that down, that's pretty good. Colors are um, I'm gonna black, dark heather, navy. And I did a red. Not crazy with the red, but spark gray. Not crazy with spark gray either. There we go, okay. Let's go here. Good, good, save. Good. Uh, now, we are out of product, so let's go back here and get some more designs. So I said, kind of, five at a time. This one's cool, alright, I'm gonna do five more. So another, I'd hit that. And again, if your computer's moving really slow, just like, take all the ones that are in here. Oops, not Tab. Uh, Shift, there we go. And just delete that, that'll save some memory inside your computer, make it run a little bit better. Alright, let's hit Ctrl-S, see if that helped. I'm also recording, yeah, that helped big time. Which takes up a lot of memory. That's an even better idea, that, I like this one better. Spark hair is good. Over here. So again, I can name this same. And then just drag this puppy in here. And then grab my my Downloads folder. Extract all. Extract. Large icons. Double-click. Black looks good, white does not look good, that's not bad. Okay, so let's go black. Navy, spark gray. Maybe a dark heather and heather indigo. Ooh, heather indigo, I like that, that looks pretty good. Alright, let's just clean this up. Paste, there we go. Okay, and then the next one. Hit X, double-click here. Drag this one. This one's cool. I can see this doing well. Pickleball, y'all. I think that could do really well. I actually have a template for this style too, and it's easy to make with PhotoP. Yeah, that thing will do. That'll work. Export layers, combos, export. And then in here, 27 is going to be pickleball, y'all. Okay, and then my download folder, it's right here. Extract all. Select. Extract, large icons. Double-click. Looks good on black and white. I like that. Let's do white, spark gray, navy, black, and maybe a dark heather. I think we got a winner there. I can see that one doing really well. Just based on, I got another store, and that type of design style works awesome. Like always, works awesome. Bring this up here. Okay, next. What's this one say? There's no crying in pickleball. Nice. I like it. That's cool. Export layers. Ooh, that didn't look bad on green either. Let's download. The other one. Alright, drag this design file. And then my downloads folder, extract all. Select, extract. Good. And then large icons. Double-click. Oh, doesn't really work on there, but I think it looked good on my green. Actually, that's, hmm, even on the, well... Definitely that. So let's do spark gray. Let's do black, of course. Um... Navy. Four. Five? Eh, that won't do that. Who knows? It doesn't look good on some of those colors, but that's like our other shirt, so no big deal. Peace, there we go. Alright, move that over. Move that over. X out of there. Okay, here we go. This is gonna look really good on black. Nice. Good. And let's go to here. 29. Oops. Real man stay out of the kitchen. Drag the design file in. Rename the design file. There. Export these, extract, sorry. Good. Large icons. Double-click. It works on white? I, hmm... Doesn't really look good on that. But it works on white. I'm gonna do white, okay. White, navy. Black. Dark heather. Now they're gonna go, okay, so there. I mean, it looks best on black, but that's fine. Right-click, cut. Okay, one more, then we'll go back to Printify. So X here, double-click, smart object. Even turn that layer off. So another just straight-up image one. Oh, no, it's not. I didn't notice the white. Alright, real man stay out of the kitchen. Another kitchen being a pickleball term. Just different design. Still looks pretty cool. Yeah, I like that. That's nice. I like the color combination there. So when you see in this, this little back thing, the trees there are weird, but I don't know. I think whoever, I didn't design this one, I bought it, but I like the combination of the colors, the white text, and the, uh, the background. So again, let's go. That's a good one. I'm just recreating it the same. There. Now. Downloads. Extract all. And then large icons. Double-click, rename to colors. Black looks good. Does white look good? Nah, it doesn't work. That's pretty good. Navy, yes. So two, three. Four. Five, there we go. Click cut. There. Okay, so I got five more to go. Into again, I'm gonna save this. I save this file as I go along. Just in case. Let's go back here. And edit, and then we're at number 26. So, delete that one. Drag this one. And make it a hair smaller. Color-wise, we've got black. Um, dark heather, heather indigo. Spark gray. And navy. Good, save to draft. Next. Duplicate. Edit. This one is... Delete this. Pickleball, y'all. This one I think is gonna be... I think this is gonna be a good seller. Let's make that a little smaller. Like, definitely gonna be a good seller. And then color-wise, we have, what do you have, white? It's a white, black, dark heather, navy, and I think it was spark gray. Yep, spark gray. Save. This is one called pickleball, y'all. I have a feeling it's gonna be one of my best sellers. Yeah, actually, this one might sell pretty well too. This is funny. When you can get funny and viral going on, uh, like, in a group or on TikTok or wherever. They can do really well. Because people will share them, and then they'll go buy them. So this one is black, dark heather, navy. We did this one in red. Not crazy about the red, but whatever, spark gray. Not crazy about that either. Black looks really good, though. And down here. And pickleball. Okay, 29. Doop. Edit. Delete. This, like the saying is really good on this, but I'm not cra- eh, that design's pretty cool. Actually, I take it back. That does look pretty good. Let's get the colors going. So we have, oh, we do have white. We have black, we have dark heather, heather indigo. And navy. Yeah, it's cool, the line. Uh, let's see. Real man stay out of the kitchen. Not in my house, but in pickleball. I guess that's how it goes. Then another one. Doop. Edit. Another same saying, different design. Look at us, hair smaller. There we go. This one is black, dark heather, military green, navy, and I did a spark gray. Save. Good. Save. Okay, we're almost at 45 minutes, so I'm gonna go for a couple more. So again, go back here and let us continue. The fun times, the amazing, super exciting. I know you guys are on the edge of your seats watching this just transpire. Because it looks so, like, so much fun. Like, you just wanna dive in and do this yourself, because you're like, wow, how is he having all the fun? Let's just volleyball, grandpa, like a regular grandpa, but cooler. But you know what? Pickleball, not volleyball. Um, that could work. Actually, I like that design a lot. I don't know why they're putting the trees in there, but I like the other part. That's pretty cool. Okay, and we'll take this here. Grandpa. And if this one works, that's where you can go and you can start, like, Papa, uh, whatever else people call their grandpas. You can make designs for that too. So it's a neat way to get, if it does take off, then you can allow them to, well, you can go with more options. Which is always good. I can't remember all the different names for them. There's so many. Let, for like a grandpa. Okay, large icons. Again, why aren't we defaulting to this? Would make my life easier. Save me a click. Alright, so that looks good. That's a good on white. That looks pretty good. Hmm, no. 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 Okay, so we're gonna do black, or new dark heather. Three. Four. Five? Yeah, let's do dark chocolate. It's only three. What happened here? Black, dark heather, spark gray. Okay, what did I miss there? So I need two more. Where's navy? Navy, and... There, now I got them. Alright, that one's ready to go. X out of that. Double-click. And what's this one? Like, this could easily be grandma too. It doesn't have to just be grandpa. Because that's a cool design, but I guess we'll test with grandpa. And then, yeah, that's awesome. Um... Then we can go into grandma's, aunt, mom, dad, all the different, like, people, basically. So this is pickle, again. Oh, same thing. Can I paste it? Yeah. Like a regular grandpa, but okay. So I got two of the same designs, but different, or same quote, different designs. That's fine. And that saved it as a different name. Why was that? Went from 100 to a different thingy. Weird. Maybe it's a Windows thing. I don't know. Yeah, same files. Alright, so black. Hmm. Now we're gonna go all dark. So black, navy, military green. So that's three, four, five? Yeah, that's cool. Shift there, right-click, cut. I not do that on number 31? No, I didn't. Okay, shift. Right-click, cut. Sorry, just going backwards in time here. There. Okay, that's better. Alright, that is number 32. That on the way. X out of here, double-click, smart object. I could even make this smaller too. There. And turn that baby off. I'm starting to slow down, so I'm gonna clear out these bottom ones. Just delete those. Okay. This is just straight-up pickleball. Pickleball player, I'll call it. Pickleball player, I'll call it. Good enough. I guess once you get to a hundred, they start adding in the names on a zip file when you're exporting it. Or whatever. Black looks really good. Actually, that looks good in white, too. Okay, black and white, yep. Uh, sport gray. Well, definitely. So three, four, five. I like that. That's a cool, clean, simple uh, design. Okay, right-click, cut. Alright, done. Done. X. Turn that one off. Let's go with the next one. I think this is gonna be a good seller. Because it's like a play on words and a very cool design. All mixed into one. I like it. Yeah, that's definitely gonna be a good one. For sure. No doubt in my mind. Looks good on black. Not so much on white. Not bad on there. Okay, we'll go that, that. Navy, yes. Four, five. There we go. Cut that. Okay. And the fifth one in this batch. Which is like third batch or fourth, I don't know what batch we're on. Turn that off. Oh, another one, same thing. I like it. Slightly different design. Excellent quote, saying, funny, good, love it. So let's call that the same thing. With a different number. Respawn Sibley. Sibley. Rename that to that. Guess I could leave the number on it. Go to our download folder. Extract all. Select. Extract. Large icons. Double-click. Looks bad on white. Not bad on spark gray. Hmm. Now we're going all dark. Dark, one, two, three, four, five. All dark on that one. And like I said like a million times, dark stuff sells best anyway, so who cares? Alright, let's move that over there. XX. File. Save as PSD. Save. Okay, so I know that's all I'm doing for, like, mock-up wise today, so I'm gonna X out of that, X out of that, X out of that. Now, that'll speed up everything in here. It's all this browser-based stuff. It takes a while. If you're hogging up memory, I got a pretty powerful computer, but it's still, um, even with that power, it can still be a little bit slow. Although it didn't really upload that much faster. What colors did we use on this one? So we used black, charcoal, dark chocolate, navy, sport gray. That looks good on black. Well, like, I think a lot of these designs look really good on black. Um, I can't remember the name of this. There we go. I had to click on that thing on another. So pickleball, grandpa, like a regular grandpa, but cooler. There we go. Oh, see, now my prices, for some reason, they change. I don't know why it does that. And we'll go three dollars more for this one. Oops. I don't know what I did there. Oh, there. So we'll just go like thirty-two, ninety-nine, and thirty-five. Yeah, like, the price just randomly changed for no reason on a duplicate. I don't get it. Why does it? Let's try it again. Duplicate. Do the next one. Doop. And this one is number thirty-two. Uh, same saying, but different number, different design. I think I went with a different colors. Yeah. Black, dark heather, heather indigo, military green, navy. Oh, I did blue. Meant to do black. That's just my OCD kicking in for that. In this list, I'll be like, that's blue! Actually, colorblind, too, for those colors, so can't really notice how much of a difference between like a dark navy blue and a and a black, except for there, I definitely noticed. Okay, delete that. Just a straight-up pickleball player. I don't know if this is a seller or not, but the plan was to use that in combination with uh, some text. And then I just figured, you know what? Why don't we just test that as a design itself? Black, dark heather, heather indigo, maybe. Now, do the black thing. Get it there. That's better. Save. This one I just called number thirty-one. Zero-three-one. Pickleball player. There we go. Now the prices are held. Save. Alright. Doop. We're coming up on an hour. I'm almost done. So this is what? Thirty-three? No, thirty-four. Did I miss one? I'll check. This is thirty-four. Unless I didn't number one correctly. So we got black, dark heather, military green, navy. Unless we did sport gray, which I'm not super crazy about. And this is number thirty-four. Maybe I just numbered it wrong. Oops, I don't know what I hit there. Save. Yeah, I just numbered it wrong. So that should be thirty-three, not thirty-one. Save product, and then I can change the number. Should've been thirty-three. Save. Thirty-four, okay. Duplicate. Edit. Thirty-five coming up. Think I like the other design better than this one. Eh, this one's not bad. Okay, black, dark heather, heather indigo, military green, and navy. Just hit black twice. Save. And this is oh-three-five. Price is good. Save. Okay. So, uh, we are just over an hour now, and I got quite a few done. I think I started at fifteen? Did I? And now I'm at thirty-five. So it's getting there. Um, they're still not uploaded to my store, but at this point, um, I think once I hit like fifty in here, then I can go and open up my store. Because I have more than enough in there. Um, that has too many variants. That should be thirty variants. Ooh, good catch by me. Because I didn't wanna sell a white one, because it's ugly. Yeah, just got my eye. Okay. So we're just over an hour and two minutes in, and we've got uh, twenty more uploaded to the store, so we're now well on our way. And with that, uh, if you do have any questions about that, let me know in the uh, comments. I'll be glad to help you out. Oh, and last thing, if you do wanna see uh, all this stuff, like, live, like what I'm doing, again, go here to the site. Right here. And press that big green button and join now. Because this, I'm doing a lot of training live. Um, you're just seeing kind of the boring old part of it, but you click there, join now. Fill that in, and then we'll see on the inside of the forums where I do three live training sessions per month. If you do have questions, oh, let me know in the comments, and we'll see you in the next one. Thanks for watching. I hope you didn't fall asleep too quickly, but uh, if you made it to the end, uh, you're a champ. I don't know if I could make it through these boring videos, but like I said, I'm doing them because uh, just as an experiment, to see if people actually watch them. So how about this? If you watch all the way through this video, let me know in the comments by posting, "I made it." Just post, "I made it," and I'll know exactly what you're talking about. I wanna see if anybody makes it to the end of these boring naptime videos. So post, "I made it" in the comments if you made it this far.